Good. Here, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Stokes County Board of Commissioners for Monday, October 23rd, 2023 at 2:00 PM. And we will start with our invocation, and I'll ask Commissioner Wood if he would do that for us.
Precious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings. We thank you for this great county we live in and the beauty that we see every day. Watch how we guide us and help us make the right decisions, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join us with a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda, and I think we need to get a motion to make a, to make a couple changes to amend the agenda, removing items B and C until a future meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the amended agenda, deleting items B and C under information.
Get that motion. Okay, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comments, and we have one person, Chad Jarvis, signed up to present public comments. Help director.
So, I wanted to use this time, I wasn't aware that there was a resolution on your agenda related to the employee settlement money until Saturday. As I was speaking to most of y'all before, the Board of Health has promised you guys a strategic plan for your December meeting. With that, I wanted to address a couple things in that resolution. First, it talks about an LCAS specific. That was in there from a meeting with Dr. Nelson the week prior. The Health Department's not completely set on an LCAS. Maybe an LCAS, an LCSW, Licensed Clinical Social Worker Combination, because an LCAS can only do addiction services, where clinical social worker can do more caseload, case working, more mental health. So, I was talking to Tammy about that, we were going to present that in our November meeting and work that out, hash that out. So, I just want to put that into your ear as well. The coordinator position, that's the key. Without it, none of this works. And until you hire that person, and they take the overarching strategic plan from the Board of Health and start tweaking it down based on the stakeholders in the county, the resources, because not everything has to cost money. We're talking about spending a lot of money, especially on the LCAS upfront, and the community paramedic as well. And then hiring peer support, there are some other peer support resources that need to be investigated by a coordinator position when you get them in the door, wherever they're placed. That's your key component. So, what we've been working on was some sample job descriptions for that position, pulling from Lake, Cumberland, and Surrey, because those are the three front runners in the state right now. If you talk to anybody, they have their plans together pretty much. Also, there's a sample job description in there for this caseworker that would be within the Health Department. I just wanted to get that out there to you. How are you guys considering your resolution? I'm not sure if you put LCAS in there in a resolution and you start spending a field money, if that arouses us. That was my concern, that's why I came today. And that's really what I have. We will have a strategic plan to you by your December meeting, as promised. Yeah, that's a consideration, I appreciate your time. Sorry to-
Thanks Chad.
Sorry to just bomb in like this, but-
Sorry.
Couldn't get on the agenda in time.
Appreciate your input. Okay, that's the only person we had signed up for public comments. Next item on our agenda is comments from the manager and the commissioners, and I'll start with Commissioner Cox.
All right, thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for being here today, and thanks for those who are watching at home, and it's almost too pretty of a day to be in here doing this, but that's the job we're tasked with, and we're here to try to make a difference in our county, and hopefully we can make some positive decisions today that will impact our county. And speaking to what Chad mentioned, I think that, you know, maybe that language, we could tweak it before we approve it to, to either do the LCAS or a clinical social worker position. I think we weren't really gonna start advertising for these positions right away anyway, we're still tweaking the job descriptions and having Human Resources look at those, so it's not anywhere close to being advertised, but I think that the plan that we are studying is a good one, the MAP Bridge Program, that's huge, and of course, getting this person that can be a facilitator or a manager, or whatever you want to call that position, approved and them hired probably before we hire the peer support specialists is huge, because they would need to have him put on that peer support specialist position as well, so, but this definitely gets the ball rolling, and I hope that we can still take some action to, it's been far too long that we've, you know, sat on this money and we need to start spending it as soon as possible, so hopefully we can at least get that ball rolling today.
Commissioner Wood, you have something? You have something?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wood?
Welcome, everybody. One thing y'all don't know about me is every day I read quotes from famous people and presidents, and there was a couple that, last couple of days, that hit me, that made me think about the county. My wife says I need to retire and get this stuff off my mind, but I want to read them to you, so I don't, so I do the quotes justice. "You cannot escape the responsibilities of the Mar by evading it today." That was Lincoln. This one I really like, by Teddy Roosevelt. "In any moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The next best thing is the wrong thing, and the worst thing you can do is nothing." And that's all I got.
That's all we got. Okay. Commissioner Chandler?
Thank you. I'd just welcome everybody here that's in person, and then also being livestreamed. I'll just kind of add on a little bit to what Chad is talking about, and then what Commissioner Cox was talking about. I agree with the, we have to make sure that we're not mandated to spend that $800,000, you know, within a certain time period, but I do want to make sure that the coordinator/facilitator position needs to be hired first, because that's where, that's where it's going to be the center of everything that will kind of make the, help make the decision of what stages we go through and what, what strategies we employ. Then the second thing is, I just, I know what the last, the last commissioner meeting we had, I know that, you know, I made a comment, I would like it under the Health Department, that I don't think you-
I think that, I would like more input from everybody on that, and I'm not saying that ain't the right place to put it, it could be, but-
And that's what I was getting to, I'm good with that, I just wanted to make sure that not, that we, that we did have an opportunity to hear-
Oh yeah.
-from other sides, I just didn't want it to be locked in one way or the other-
Right.
-and then we go, uh-oh, now we gotta do more paperwork and backtrack out and this and that.
Exactly.
So, at a future date, we can put it on discussion agenda, and then we can kind of find out where to say-
Yeah, sure.
That's all I got, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Menon Hall?
Thank you, sir. Just want to welcome everybody here today that's here in person, also everyone that's watching this livestream on YouTube. Thank you for coming out, being a part of our governmental process. Our constituents, I hope, can always feel that they can give any of our five commissioners call anytime they need assistance, and keep in your prayers, I hope that Israeli, Israel and the Israeli war that they are currently combating, and I just feel like that that is a very strong issue right now, and just keep adding your prayers, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Menon Hall. Amber, if you got comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to welcome everybody here, thank you for being here today, and I did want to just share, last Wednesday, I had the opportunity of going out with our Sewell Water Department for most of that day and looking at, we have 24 watersheds in the county, if people didn't know that, and it's the most in the state, we have the most in the state, 24, and so we split them up, and I went along with Janice and some of the Board of Supervisors, and Michaela and the rest of the supervisors went to a different part of the county, and we were able to see some beautiful scenery and check out those watersheds, so I really enjoyed that, and just wanted to share that information with everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amber. I'd like to welcome everybody, we really do appreciate your participating in our meeting, we value your input on all the decisions we make and all the issues that we address, so it's great to have everybody that's making the effort to help us run the government. Also, I would just mention that the feasibility team is on the ground here this week for the hospital up here, they'll be visiting King Pine Hall and Danbury Hospital, they'll be here for three days, interviewing people and gathering information, and hopefully in the near future, we'll have our feasibility study done for the providing medical services to the county in the future. And with that, the next item on our agenda is conflicts of interest. Before moving further, does any board member have a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda for today, or one that could be perceived as a conflict of interest?
No.
No, 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 from everybody, okay, good on that. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, could I have a motion for approval, consent agenda? Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Take passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is our information agenda, and the first item on there today will be Stacy Elms with the DSS Annual Report for FY 2223. This the same as what was on our agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hey Stacy.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here and present to you some of the good work that happens on a daily basis at the Department of Social Services. I'd really like to brag on our staff more than anything else to you, and let you know how proud I am of what we do and how much work we do, and I believe that the numbers in this annual report speak for themselves regarding the number of people that we serve. Our employees give their all to our agency, and to this county, and to the people that we serve, and then they give more than that. You know, we do things like the breast cancer support group that we have, where we provide a little basket of goodies to people who are newly diagnosed with breast cancer, that's just on the side. We also have a very small food bank in our agency that is not agency-specific, it's our workers, our workers want to do that, to people who don't qualify for food stamps or come in needing emergency food, we can give them a little bit of food on the spot. We've also, and I forgot to put this in the annual report, but this past, during that fiscal year, we had two Second Harvest Foods Bank distributions, which was, it's a county thing, that we had in our parking lot and came all the way up here, and if you were able to come or anything like that and see the mammoth amount of people and cars, it was really shocking, but our staff, as well as Fire Department, and EMS and Sheriff's Office helped make that happen. So, our folks just do good, good work. I'm not saying we don't make mistakes, because we do, but they do good, good work, and they provide a lot of services to those in the county. So, that's all I have to say about the annual report. And then the next thing that I provided to you was a quarterly look at where we're at right now with our numbers, July, August, September, and I was looking at that in comparison to the annual report, and if you did the same thing, you'll notice that some of those numbers from the quarterly report will be much higher when I do the annual report for this fiscal year. So, I, you know, I believe that's probably from the economy, from lots of different things that are happening, so that's all I have to say.
All righty, we'll have, we'll start with Commissioner Menon Hall. Do you have any questions?
It was a very comprehensive report that you gave us, as I looked over your dashboard on my computer over the weekend, Stacy, and everything from APS, Adult Protective Services, CPS, et cetera, I can definitely see that y'all are staying busy, I know that, you know, hey, seven years up here, I know how busy y'all are, I think y'all are doing a very good job, and I thought the comments from one of your workers, Holly Hooker, who I don't think would mind me mentioning her name, one of your income maintenance caseworkers that she made about why she was, what made her job so special to her after six years of service, was very touching, and made me feel like that, hey, she has, she's doing that job for the right reason, and that was very special, but I looked over all of your comments as far as how many people we were serving, and all the different service areas, and social services, and it was a very good report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ryan. Mr. Chandler?
Excellent, excellent report. I guess, in your opinion, I mean, what can we do, what can we do different or better to get you more help with some of the positions that seem to stay vacant?
Well, right now, right now, our only vacancies are in, one, in Child Protective Services, in our in-home unit, and then we have two in foster care. It seems that we always have foster care vacancy. And you know, there's a lot of reasons, I think, that those positions, there's a lot of reasons I think people leave those jobs, and I think probably the biggest one, and I think money's a factor, but I think the biggest one is the magnitude of work that's involved when you carry foster care cases. You have to deal with not only the child, but you have to deal with their biological parent, you're dealing with their foster parent, or the facility that they're placed in all the time, and then you're dealing with the Guardian and Lightroom program, you're dealing with the attorneys, you're dealing with the court system, it's just, the magnitude of work involved in a foster care social worker is unbelievable, and it never gets any better. So, I don't know if there's anything that could help us get those positions. We have interviewed today, we interviewed somebody that we think is a good candidate, so we're hopeful, we interviewed a couple last week, and one of those might work out, so we're hopeful. Then we got to get them in there, get them trained, and keep them, so I don't really know what the answer is. Short, lower caseloads would help, you know, but if we could get the two additional foster care social workers, that would help with the caseloads of everybody else, so.
Are the majority of those employees that are here currently, are they from Stokes County and reside in Stokes County, or is it, is it a combination of some or some?
We've got a couple in Forsyth, I'm trying to go down the hall, a couple in Forsyth, and probably the remainder are in Stokes. We have nine foster care positions, and I think probably just two, maybe three, are in another county, the other ones are in Stokes.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Wood?
Good report, I appreciate what your group, what people do. I've seen more of this county side than I don't want to see here lately, and we got issues. Our church is helping with some of that, but we're just a small church, being in jail over in Sandy Ridge, you're doing a fantastic job, I brag on them a little bit, but hang in there. That's all I got.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes, a very good report, thank you for putting that together. Can I ask about the Medicaid expansion and how, I mean, I know we gave you two more positions to help fully, hopefully help you with that, and then that also may lead you into talking to us a little bit about your space issue, if you want to elaborate on that.
Medicaid expansion's effective December 1st. Stokes County is, looks like we might get upwards of 3,000 additional applicants for Medicaid, which will be a lot, and you were very giving in allowing us to get two additional staff, which we were able to get in July, so they've been training and continue to be in training, because it takes a long time for any of our folks to get their training to be able to know what they're doing, really good. So, as far as space, we have three workers in one office, in one space, we have two workers in several other spaces, we have a worker, a worker in a closet, we have a worker in the file room, we need space. You know, I've talked with Stuart Easter and Amber about the possibility of the probation building when it becomes vacant, but that's down the road. Stuart called me the other day, asking me about the King space, the basement, which we used to occupy many years ago, two days a week. This weekend, I started thinking about the possibility of, it's not really job sharing, but office sharing, and looking at the possibility of folks being able to, like, do a three, two, three days in the office, two days out of office, but share the office with somebody so that, but sometimes that's just impossible with the work that we do, so we will have to look at that very closely, and it will require some additional management work, but we are completely out of space, completely.
Now, I have a question, going back, it's good to see that you're fully staffed in income maintenance, and there are only three openings, and social work is pretty good, given all the-
Right.
-circumstances, but you were talking about how the caseloads, what's the average again of caseload per worker?
Are you talking about social work or income maintenance?
In social work, in foster cares.
Foster care, it's, the state says 15, which is way too many cases for a social worker to handle with the, with the amount of work that goes with it. We try, and we've not done very well at that because of vacancies, but we have always, since Mr. Morris was county manager, and we had a conversation about maybe hiring additional people with less cases, maybe that would help us keep people, and it does help, it does help a lot, but at that time, we were trying to keep it between 10 and 12, which is a whole lot more manageable than 15. 10, I would say, that would keep somebody busy 37 to 40 hours a week, just 10, because of all the intricate work that's involved in carrying a foster care case. Now CPS, Child Protective Services, and In-Home Services, theirs is 10? 10, state requires it to be 10. Well, it doesn't require it, but they say you can carry 10, and that seems doable for our agents, that we've, we don't have any issues with that unless we have a vacancy, and then workers just have to do a little extra work.
What, the event you were talking about through, who did you say puts that on, where they bring the food?
Second Harvest Food Bank.
Second Harvest, and about how many people took advantage of it, but isn't it true that a lot of those people can be from out of county, like, there's no way to make sure that they're-
Yes, that was very disappointing for us, the first one we did, because they told us, you know, things like, well, there are certain people that follow these, every time they know there's one, they're going to be there, and they're going to be in the front of the line, so that was disappointing, knowing that it wasn't just going to help Stokes County folks, but they did serve a lot of, a lot of people.
Well, the thing about that jail and being due that Commissioner Wood mentioned, what's great is I think it really does help Stokes County people, and elderly, and so that's something, I guess, as, in your office, maybe you can make sure people know about-
Well, and you know, I didn't, I was here the day, the first day that they came here and spoke, so I knew, I had it on my radar, but I had no idea, it just, it just started until the other day when I got an email from Laura Bullens.
They done it twice now?
Three.
Three times?
I was out of town, I've been, I have been to one, and it was out of me, the amount of food they give out was huge, and they line up three deep-
Wow.
-cars, and it's so sad, but they're, they're so thankful too, and I think they make them feel out of app, vacation-
They have to let them know they're coming.
And they have to, yeah, they, they're trying to not, they're not that far from Rockingham County, so they're trying to keep it just for Stokes.
That's right.
And, but the amount of food, they're giving out tons of food, I mean, it's huge.
That's right.
Their target is the 60 and older, yeah, maybe we can make sure that we, I'm sure there's people on your radar that you can let know about.
And November 16th, if y'all got a day or vacation day you want to waste, they need help, because I helped, and it took me a week to get over it. I mean, loading that food in people's cars was not for the old people, especially the old fat people.
I've got a question that I have, thank you.
I got, I got one more, from a guy that's worked 23 years at home, is that a possibility?
Or?
I've worked at, from home, 23 years, is that a possibility for some of these maybe seniority people? It's not for everybody, but is that a possibility for space?
Working at home?
Yes.
That's what, we allow that some with our social workers, and it does help them a lot, because they, they can work, they can do narrative, they can do paperwork without being interrupted, because at the office is constant interruption, and you know, our staff also stays with children when we can't find placements, and right now, we've been with a child almost four weeks, so our staff is very, very tired, yes, they're getting paid, but they're very, very tired, so they have to stay with this child, we have to, he's in our office from 8:30 to 5:00, which is not always fun either, because he likes attention, he's 16, and you know, then, then from 5:00 until the next morning, we stay with him. So, our staff are, they, they have the biggest servant hearts, I believe, I have ever seen, and that, that just makes me very proud, but it also makes me worry so much for them because of burnout, and they feel it, not, not just our social workers, but our income maintenance staff, and you know, our whole agency staff is signing up to stay with this kid, because our social workers, there's no way, no way they could do this alone, we just don't have the staff for that, it's two staff with this child all the time, until we can find a bed for him. And I know I went off topic, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
Stacy, just a couple of questions. On your report, you know, the one that's got the 70, 30 thing there, that's seven, that's 7,900,000, whatever, that's, that's trending up, you said. That's what you're, that's the number that's going to be trending up?
No, I mean, it probably will, but what I was talking about was the, the sheer volume of numbers of, of cases and people seeing and that type of thing.
Probably calls it too.
Right, right.
You, on the, you've got a bullet up there in the under family support services, it's 7692402 in food and nutrition benefits that were issued. How does that number relate to the number of total expenditures?
It's not included.
It's not included, that's in addition.
That's all federal dollars, total federal.
Okay, so that's in addition to that total expenditure. Okay, good. Only other question I have was, how's that voter registration stuff work over there? What is, is that a requirement that y'all do that or?
It is. We have to ask everybody that comes in if they want to register to vote. So it's just something that we're required to do.
Oh, okay. Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one.
Yeah, okay, for one.
Can I ask you one question, Stacy? At our last meeting, Jamie from HR gave us a report of the different rationales or reasons that employees from Stokes County left and went to other places. How many, you know, was it better pay somewhere else? And he gave us the number into the social services department. I know you probably can't give me an exact number off the top of your head, but what would you say your estimation is the main reason that y'all lose employees?
I'm not sure that I could give you a, a main reason because there seems to be, you know, like there's people who've left to go to school. There's people who've left for more money. There's people who've left for same job, but closer to home. There's people who've retired. I don't know, I don't.
So a variety of reasons.
Yes, sir.
Not one, man.
Right, right.
Five or six different ones would probably be coming together.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good. Thank you, Stacy. That was a fantastic report. Like all that data, didn't you, Brad? The data man. The next item on our agenda is public safety call nature statistics and Matt Boyle is going to come up, I think, and present on that.
Afternoon. I was asked to gather some statistics for today's meeting. What you have there in your packet or, these are cat calls for service for the year 2022, calendar year, January, the end of the year, and then 2023 year to date. As you can see there, these are, there are a lot of, a lot of different natures, how we categorize calls by nature. What you see in your packets are for all public safety. These is for all law enforcement calls, are all medical, fire, everything. So if you have any questions or anything you'd like to discuss in detail.
Is it, Matt, is it, is it King included in this?
King is included, correct.
A separate, just for the, like the sheriff?
Right. This is, yeah, this is total for, for the entire county, King included. I mean, we can, we can run reports, agency specific, but for, but what you see there is correct, yeah, countywide.
So then with, I know that the, the sheriff, and I'm assuming EMS, and I know fire doesn't, they don't have the capability to, so like if, a lot of times a citizen may call in and say, hey, I had, I had my home broke into the deputy would get to the scene and it's not really a home break in, it's vandalism.
Correct.
So, I mean, is there a way that they can go in, do they, or they go over the radio and say, you know, to Stokes that it wasn't a burglary or B and E, it was a vandalism?
Correct. There are, it's kind of, I wouldn't say 50/50, but we do get requests from officers in the field to change the nature. If they are dispatched to something, arrive to find something else, a lot of times we will change it if they tell us to change nature. They also have the capability on the back end, once the report is written, to do the same thing.
So do you have the capability to give response times?
Yes.
So I, I mean, I, I don't know, what I'm used to is it's a, response times are broke down priority one, priority two, priority three, and then priority four. And I think at one of our work sessions you came, it's been a while, so I can't remember what, what your explanation was. If you have that, but it's, it's called, you have, you do it differently or something? It's not really a priority one or it's a, I mean, I couldn't, I don't remember exactly.
Right, yeah, I, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying. So yes, we can, I can run a report based on priority, priority one being the highest, two, three. And then we have some lower priority stuff like four and five, which are basically just like administrative calls, stuff that we just keep records on. But yeah, we can, I can run a report for response times for units in the field. Response times as far as the comm center goes, how long it takes us to pick up the phone and hang it up and that kind of stuff. And I mean, we, yeah, we have that capability for sure to, to run those, run that information.
So on your, on your highest priority, priority one. So on a priority one, I'm assuming, let's say it's an armed robbery in progress, that should be a priority one. So what, what is different? What is, what is the different response? In other words, what's different when it's a priority one, other than if it's just a priority three or something to where, you know, it's something that's, nothing's in danger or destruction's not in property? How does, I mean, what do you do differently? I mean, what is the?
How do we determine what the difference is or?
Well, I, I guess I'll just say it, but so other than, other than just getting on the radio and say, hey, you know, we got an armed robbery in progress at Burger King and it's, you know, it's, it's a priority one response. But I mean, what's, so what goes on out in the field and in the dispatch center that makes it different from a lower level call?
So we're, so obviously we're going to take the call and prioritize it as priority one, but the priority based on the call nature. We're going to assign it to the officer in that zone. And then units will take up, you know, be the backup unit or whatever. So somebody will speak up and say, I'll be around also, that kind of thing. I mean, that, that, our, our main thing is obviously to, to take the call in a timely manner, prioritize it right, give it to the right unit and get them on the way and then everybody else can, can kind of respond on their own or however they see fit. If it's maybe it's one of those deals where it's kind of on a borderline zone between two different zones and they're both relatively close kind of thing.
It's not really a lot of extra resources.
Right. And, and, and two, if, you know, we do have a protocol that stuff like, take something out of school, for example. If we have an incident out of school, like an active assailant type deal, we're on the phone with probation parole, highway patrol, I mean, that's one of those things where we're just getting as many resources as we can. King's going to come outside the city limits, maybe to an extent. They're not probably going to come to Sandy Ridge, but you know, on the, on the outskirts of the city limits, they'll probably step out and do that kind of stuff.
At least they can backfill, so if
Right, right.
We're taking a sheriff's car from around the King area and they're heading to Sandy Ridge, at least if King can move out a little bit in case something, you know, drastic or emergency comes in, they can help over there.
Right.
That's kind of what, what, kind of what I was looking for too. Which I noticed that on both of, of the year's reports, I noticed that like the highway patrol, I think one year is like, yeah, it's 639. I don't know what, I don't know what the activity is. But I, is that, is that where they, like maybe
Either, either
Ricks or something or?
Right, either, oh, highway patrol notification, 632 for last year. That was, yes, an accident outside the city limits, the King, out in the county that the highway patrol handles, where we refer to the highway patrol. Those, those are where those kind of, or some, sometimes it's being transferred to highway patrol. People reporting something that, that is on a state road that is investigated by highway patrol, where they transfer the caller to them.
I think it's very, I think it's very important that, and the reason I asked for this update today from you is that we, our citizens need to understand, number one, that, you know, we're, you're out there 24/7 and then you're behind the scenes as well 24/7. And we have to be able to know the, the volume of calls, the type of calls. And so I, I'm glad that, you know, you do have the, you do have the ability to, you know, to provide those statistics and even also to narrow it down even from, because I mean, we're, we're a small county and, and we've all got to work together. I mean, a lot of times, and, and you know, from size, that, you know, different agencies, sometimes they don't want to play with one another very well. They all want to talk about, it's not my problem, it's your problem to handle it. But in Stokes, I mean, we can't, we got to make sure that we don't, we don't have that, that problem. We need to help King. King needs to help us, probation patrol, highway patrol, whatever it is. We all, we got to make sure that, you know, that, that we work as one. But I would be interested in the number of priority one calls especially. And, and I noticed that really one of the, the bigger, one of the bigger things too, that time wise for the sheriff's offices, they serve a ton of civil papers. And I don't even think, I don't know for sure if they even have a civil unit. I don't know if it's the road deputies that do, I might ask them, and you don't have to tell me what, what the sheriff does, but it's just, stuff like that is, I think that helps with, you know, how efficient we are, you know, in the, in the county. But that's all, that's all I have for it.
Hey, Commissioner Minenhall.
Yes. Appreciate the breakdown of every single type of call you'll take in, Matt.
I told Amber, I said, I'll be glad to do this. It's probably going to be a lot of pages.
You know, I, I went over this two or three times, see it, you know, and there were four or five things that stuck out that, you know, you have something like illegal burning one. Then you might have something else, 3,000 and so on. I did want to ask you one question, just to make sure of how you'll handle this. And I know that it happens. Looking at the first page from last year, you had 911 hangup calls.
Yes, sir.
Which I think, looking at this, you had 2,679 calls from last year.
Correct.
They called and hung up. 2,679 people did a 911 hangup call. When you get that hangup call, they hang up on you. Does your group call them back to see if it was a legitimate call or?
Yes, sir.
Do call back?
Our first step is to call them back and to make contact with them. Most of the time it's, you know, a pocket dial, a smart watch, something like that. However, the sheriff's office and King PD for the most part, pretty much have kind of the same standard, even the same policy. Even if we call back and make contact with someone, they're still going to respond. We are instructed to let them know, understand it was an accident, you, you pocket dial. Just understand that a deputy is going to call you or show up just to confirm. So matter of fact, we had a whole meeting about, about this particular matter about a month ago. 911 hangups are a global, a nationwide problem and every 911's in or in the country has seen a huge increase in that. And it's because of, there's so many easy ways to call 911 with an iPhone, Apple watches, all these smart watches. You can take your phone, throw it on the floor, it hits, lands hard, it'll think you've fallen, calling, it's just, all these crazy things in technology. So that's really what has driven up that number. That's why, you know, you see so many, if you can compare the two sheets, we've already surpassed 2022 in 911 hangups. And we're only, you know, 10 months through, so. It, it, they, they spend a lot of time responding to those kind of things. I mean, it ties up operator two, calling somebody back, so. But for the most part, yes, they're all accidental dollars. You will get someone who did call and hang up, you call them back and they need something, they need medical assistance or whatever, so. But most of the time it is accidental.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Commissioner Wood.
I'm good. Good report.
I got to follow up on what you were just talking about with Commissioner Minenhall. I just actually seen that on the news where a guy's iPhone called 911 and saved him because he was in a crash and couldn't reach his phone and was unconscious or whatever. And actually saved him by his phone call and I was like, what? I didn't even, just upgraded to an ambulance.
We were in a, there's several, there's several centers in the state right now going, there, there was an email about this morning on an email thread talking about how, how different jurisdictions are handling automatic crash notifications. Something like that, you know, Apple detects that there's been a crash and you have some jurisdiction who are going, they're sending everybody, treating it all the same, and some people are like, we're running out of automatic crash notifications at two in the morning and there's nobody there, nothing really happened and so everybody's kind of caught in between on really, we overdispatch or not and so. The state actually produced a document too, speaking of 911 hangups, a couple of months ago, on how to educate the public. We printed off several of them. The sheriff's office has started handing them out to the public and posting them in various locations on how to make sure that, you, you know, you don't accidentally push stuff on your watch or your phone, that kind of stuff. Just to see if we can get that number to go down, so.
Yes, for sure. Let me ask you one quick question, just out of my own curiosity, because I had a friend in my family recently that had to go to the hospital that lives right on the outskirts of King, right across the line. And they had to wait over 30 minutes for an ambulance to come from other side of Clemmons because that's
Right.
And we were talking about, I, I knew that like King Fire Department responded and they made sure the patient was stable and, and had what they needed till the ambulance got there, which was great. But is it only the ambulance in that county can transport?
Well, unless, unless for some reason, I mean, really kind of the, the way it works here, between here and there is, so the EMS supervisor of whatever, Psythe, could have reached out to us and said, hey, we, we're, our ambulance is a long ways off. Do you have someone closer in King or whatever? And then they would have kind of had to mutually agree upon who's going to, you know, yeah, we can do it. No, we don't have anybody at King, our closest units in Danbury, Union Way or whatever. But I mean, that happens sometimes.
I mean, the patient wasn't critical, so it probably wasn't that they had to get there since the, they had been checked out by, by the fire department from King and the EMS from there.
Right.
The workers had already kind of got them stable with their, you know, issues and stuff. So had it been like a heart attack or something, it might have been a different.
Could have been a different story, right, yeah.
But I, I was pretty sure that we did do some mutual aid across county lines like that.
It happens, and I'm not picking off her side, but it happens often with them that they request somebody because, I mean, they are just, they're, I mean, their call volume is extremely high and they're, you know. Exactly, so.
Yeah, okay. Good report. Thanks for all this information.
Yeah, man.
The, like the public, like you said, we're, we got people out, it's just a lot of calls for insurance. The, the, like, the public, like you said, where, where you got people out, it's just a lot of calls for a short amount of people to respond to. Your response times might be a little greater. But y'all are doing a good job, that's all I got.
Okay. Matt, just a couple of things, I hadn't seen this report before, so, I mean, I saw it in our package, but I hadn't seen it before that, so. What it is, is this, this number, like, for the one I'm looking at, sixty-six thousand calls.
Hmm.
In a year, right, that's the total, at the bottom.
Yes, yes, you're looking at twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-two. And so, um, so what that number is composed of is, uh, that's everybody with a phone or a radio or any kind of way of talking to you guys. Like, making a connection with you, right, is that what it is?
Uh, to an extent, so that, that, that number you see there are calls that we have entered our CAD system. Now, that does not necessarily mean every one of those sixty-six thousand calls were somebody we dispatched on. Um, like if.
Are you talked to though?
Uh, yes, yes, somebody we talked to, um. The one that really sticks out into my mind that you will probably, that I can probably explain the best is, um.
Check. That's the one I asked.
Security check?
Yeah, seventeen thousand.
Yeah, those are all, yeah, those are pretty much all self-initiated. Uh, so like, the sheriff's office has a list of businesses and residences.
So are they doing that just to have a record that they did?
Yes, that they did, and they call into us and say, security check at whatever the business is, we log it.
Okay.
And.
That takes a lot of time, do that?
Correct.
I mean, I just, when I saw that big number, I'd just divide it by three sixty-five and try like, how many, how many did four hundred of these a day?
Right, yeah, right.
But, um, so what was the one you were gonna mention?
I was gonna mention, um. And I can't remember the name of it, uh. We, we refer to it as a administrative call, I think, and we were talking about it maybe a little bit earlier.
Okay.
It's not, it's, it's labeled something different, oh, um, call request other non-law enforcement. Um, so we refer to those as what we call administrative calls. That is just another, and if you notice on the twenty-twenty-three, it's been twenty-six hundred, twenty-six hundred and seventy-seven of those. So those are things like, um. Multiple callers on one incident, so there's a wreck on fifty-two, and we take ten calls, of course, we've only. We've got the first caller's information, we've dispatched a call, they have been nine other people call. We just keep a record of those nine other calls. Duplicate, just a little note, second caller, third caller with the information.
Number, that big?
They're in that number, stuff like that, someone calls, um, nine-one-one and says, we're in, I'm actually in Forsyth County, not Stokes, I'm just close to the line. We transfer it to Psythe, we put in that, and put a note in there, call transferred to Psythe. Just, just so that we can kind of track everything pretty much we do. Um, so not, yes, not all sixty-six thousand of those calls were actually calls that we dispatched.
Okay, then like the one Brad asked about the civil processes, that when they do, when they deliver some papers, they just call them to you?
Most of those are self-initiated, yes. Um. And I can, and I, I, I've done this on my own, just, just to, um. Ju- you know, just to have some reference in case, you know, there's anything come up, so in twenty-two, we answered seventy-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-six telephone calls. But obviously, there was not, that, that's everything, that's everything from calling, your wife calling and see how your day's going, to nine-one-one calls, that's every time the phone rings. So it's almost eighty thousand, um, so, you know, not every time the phone rings is a, is a call for service, um. But anytime that we kind of, this document related to a call or anything like that, we do put it in the system, and it does show up on this report.
Is this about a normal amount for, I mean, you got four dispatchers on time, at any one time?
Three, three at all times, correct.
Is this a normal amount for three dispatchers?
I mean, so, I mean, in twenty-twenty-two, I, I, I've done a couple of rough numbers before I come up here, that's the average of a hundred and eighty-one calls a day. That's sixty-six thousand, between, in a twenty-four hour period, uh, so you, if you divide that over six people. Uh, there again, um, some of this stuff is not necessarily labor intensive, this is not a call at your EMDN or, you know, that kind of stuff, a lot of this stuff could be self-initiated. You know, a detective walks in and says, hey, I need you to create a report for something that he dealt with over the weekend that he's getting to on Monday or something. That's going in the system, that may take thirty seconds to, to put in and leave and clear out.
Okay. I know.
Go ahead, Brad.
I know that, kind of blind what he's talking about, but just to give you an example. I mean, a lot of centers, they just have nothing but call takers. Then you have so many dispatchers, so what, what, so it's a smaller center, but just the dispatchers. Are not only taking the calls, and what gets really complicated is the way, so like the EMDs.
Hmm.
You know, so on your emergency response to the protocol, and if it's a police call, like an armed robbery or something, it's a protocol that has to be followed by. The dispatcher, so it's, I guess it's, it's a little bit this, a little bit that, but I guess a lot. It's not like you have people just taking calls.
Right, exactly.
Enter them in, and then the person just dispatches, and you're doing a lot, so I know it can get, I know there's downtime, but for the most part.
For the most part, yeah, I mean, some.
You're answering the phone.
Sometimes that, sometimes that, that armed robbery call is taken by the EMS dispatcher, who's also dispatched a CPR somewhere or something there, so.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks, good report, appreciate it.
Hmm.
Okay, now I think we're ready to go to our discussion agenda, the first item on that's the tax office, uh, agenda, from Richard Brim.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just want to mention too, uh, last week, uh, the folks from Chargers or Freedom were here, and, uh, they cleaned it up and done some painting around it. Looks really nice, so check it out, looks, looks good. Uh, just like always, uh, first thing, we'll talk about our tax collection status report for the month. Uh, for school operating in General County, we've collected a little over fifteen point three million, about three hundred and thirty thousand ahead of the pace where we were last year this time. So we're off to a good start this fiscal year. Uh, next item is our real and personal leases, uh, less than a hundred, we have seven accounts that total six hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh, real and personal refunds, less than a hundred, we have four accounts that total two hundred and forty dollars and eighty cents. Uh, releases more than a hundred, we have three accounts that total three thousand five sixty-three eighty-seven. And the final category, refunds more than a hundred, we have two accounts that total two thirty-seven ninety-five. Uh, we have two late applications for early exemption. Uh, then we have the EMS quarterly report for building and collections, we build twelve hundred and seventy-eight transports so far this fiscal year. Charged out nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand twenty-four dollars, and have collected five seventy-five five forty. With two hundred and three thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars in contractual, uh, obligations that we had to write off. Uh, then we have our data max quarterly report, uh, they've collected five thousand fifty-one dollars and sixty cents for us. And, uh, in the final category, we have the quarterly discovery and garnish report, we've discovered a hundred accounts. Uh, that totals one million five forty-five five oh seven, and value that's generated seventeen thousand one hundred and ten dollars in revenue. And, uh, we've processed a hundred and sixty-five garnishments with a levy of fifty-one thousand three eighty-four. And then the last item I've got is, uh, update on the reevaluation, uh, you know, I was gonna do a five-part, uh, segment once a month, and last month, I don't know what happened, but I had it in the folder to do segment two. Somehow it didn't get put in my, didn't get put in there, so I had to, so this, today you get, you get two, two segments. So the first segment is just the keys to a successful reappraisal, and the steps taken to conduct a solid reappraisal. Just like anything you do, you gotta have a good game plan, and this will be my eighth reappraisal, and, you know, I've learned a little bit, and over time, you know, you've got to, you've got to be detailed, it's kind of like eating the elephant. If you think about eating the elephant, you know, you won't be able to do it, but you just got to do one bite at a time. So we have a good game plan, we have a lot of good folks helping us. And the other thing is public relations, you know, you've got to be able to communicate, uh, to the public, got to inform, update and educate. Uh, show the taxpayers that we're fair, uh, we're approachable, and we're efficient. Uh, and then you gotta listen, you gotta listen to the taxpayer, cause, um, you know, a lot of times we're all right, but sometimes we, we make a mistake, we have an error, but, and we're not afraid to admit it, we'll correct it and move on. Steps taken to, to do a solid reappraisal, um, you know, we look at all the qualified sales, uh, you know, the qualified sales, it looks like. For January one twenty-one through the end of, the end of next year, we're thinking we'll have approximately around three thousand thirty-two hundred sales. And for a county of thirty-one thousand parcels, that's, that's a fair amount, so we should be able to accurately, um, value what the properties were. So what we, what we do is we, you know, we're gonna go out and look at those properties, we're gonna verify, we're gonna look at, uh, make sure our data's correct on our card. Uh, go out and do that, and when I mentioned armed length transaction, what that is, it's a sale between two unrelated parties. Um, both of them having a reasonable knowledge of the market, and no one's under pressure to buy or sell. So we'll, we'll talk to attorneys when they bring the deeds in, and we'll find out if it's a, if it's a good sale or not. Then we'll take those sales, and we'll pass that information after we deem them qualified, and after we look at everything, we'll pass that information over to our GIS land, uh, records mapping department. And they'll create a, uh, layer on the map that will show where the properties have sold and how much they've sold for. And, uh, that's a good visual aid, just to, just to show people when they come in, to let them know that we, we know where the sales are, and, you know, it helps us to, to appraise, uh. Cause our county's broken into about four hundred and fifteen different market areas. Uh, and, and we establish market areas by specific, uh, subdivisions in the county, or property type, or geographical location boundaries. Uh, now we start off in the, in the northeast part of the county, and we funnel it down towards the southwestern part, going from the lowest value to the highest value, and then we have to blend all that together. Where it, uh, works out and depicts what the market's actually doing. Uh, tax office, we have prepared a detailed, um, PowerPoint presentation that we plan to share in the spring of twenty-twenty-four. To, uh, inform the citizens, we'll go to different civic groups and, and all throughout the county, so. You guys have any suggestions, wants to go anywhere, we'd be glad to do that, you know, we'll do it during the course of the day, and we'll do it in the evening, whatever we need to do. And, uh, primary focus will be on the revaluation, but we'll also talk about exemption and deferment programs that's available, uh, to the citizens. So that's, that's last month's update, and this is this month's update, talk about the data collection and analysis of, and reappraisal of land. Data collection, field review, you know, their value is only as good as, as your data, and, uh, we try to collect a lot of data, we, we verify that it's right, I mean, um. You know, we look at square footage, uh, quality of construction, exterior siding, bedroom, bathroom count, floor coverings. Uh, the quality of construction and attributes such as car storage, uh, decks, porches, sunrooms, things, things of that nature, miscellaneous improvements, uh. Like outbuildings, um, swimming pools. Uh, and this year, this revaluation, we're gonna focus on ponds, that's one thing that, as we've charted, that, uh, ponds add value. So we've never valued really for ponds, so this reeval, evaluation, we, we will, so hopefully, uh, we'll, we'll get it right and, uh. And, um, value those like they need to be valued. Reappraisal of land, uh, reappraisal of land is a little bit different, uh, we do most of our reappraisal of land from, um, desktop appraisal. We have such good maps that we're able to use that, uh, can actually show us a lot more sometimes than, than what you see on the ground, if you go up to a large track, it's kind of hard to. Hard to walk over, and with our maps, uh, we're confident that we can value the property like it needs to be valued based on the contours and the, of the maps. Uh, plus it's just more time efficient, I mean, it's hard to walk over four hundred square miles of property, especially with the terrain in Danbury. Um, so we're able, able to do that, and nothing's foolproof, uh, anytime anybody wants us to come out, we'll be glad to come out and look at your property, walk over with us. Walk over with you, and you show us anything you've got to show us, and we'll address it, but that's all I have.
All right, Amber, have any questions?
I just want to say this is a very detailed explanation, and I think it, I think the key here is. It's getting this out in front of the twenty-twenty-five revale. Getting it out to the people, communicating it the way you're doing it ahead of time. Communication's the key to anything.
Absolutely.
And if the people in the county knows the process, what you're going through, and, uh, you know, I'm gonna tell you. Without reading out your amounts of what reappraisal base rates are gonna start at. That caught my eye, I'm not gonna say what that is. That really caught my eye, especially for the. Entire county, the different parts, that was quite a, uh, sales pitch, and I did assume on the last month's were that one place. That business, uh, that you had listed six times, they have closed, is that correct?
They, they have, they have closed, and on that particular one, what happened was, uh, they had not listed or signed a listing form. And, uh, some, the father had passed away, and his sister lived in another part of the state, she's recently passed away, we didn't have a signed form. And our, our ladies just built that out, uh, the son come in, and, uh, he, uh, took some of those items, and he was, he kept some of those, a lot of them were salvaged. And, uh, actually, he's got some other property that he hasn't been listing, that we've actually made contact, uh, just last week, and it would be a discovery done on that property. But this property here is no longer, it's been salvaged, and it's gone from the county.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. John.
Okay, Mr. John. Just a comment, great job. You were always very thorough, and I appreciate that. Mr. Wood?
Great job, and I agree with Ronnie, get out in the public, I love the idea of a PowerPoint presentation, I was raised on it. And it's, it's a good tool to get it across to the citizens. Great job.
Mr. John?
That's a good report, and good information, and, um, thank you for bringing it to us, and. I think you're doing the right thing, getting the word out as early as you can.
Okay, I'm sorry to hear you're looking at ponds, but, uh.
Make sure you check entry rate.
I'll ma- I'll make sure I do your first.
How deep of a pond?
Keep us both out of trouble.
Range yours today. How much, how much does a pond add?
We're still working on that, but, uh, I think, we're, we're gonna tie it to size, uh, we're gonna tie it to size, we've got different categories.
Sure, but that's why you're sitting in the D S A. Yeah, your, your pond goes for.
We'll, we'll do it, we'll do it right there.
Okay.
It's gonna leak now.
All right, thanks, Rich, that's an excellent report, I don't have any other questions, I don't think.
Welcome, the only, uh, thing I'd like to do is move, uh, real and personal releases more than a hundred. Uh, and refunds more than a hundred, and delayed applications to the, uh, November thirteenth consent agenda.
All right, thank you very much, we'll do that. Our next item on the agenda is, uh, discussion of Needs-Based Public Schools Capital Fund, Dr. Rice is gonna present to us on that.
Good afternoon, thank y'all for inviting me today, um, before I begin, may I ask Mr. Brim one question?
Yeah.
Well, he just laughed.
All right, I'll ask a question, it may be in your report, uh, I've heard that the total tax revenue for Stokes County per year is around that thirty million dollar range, is that. Sound that about accurate with the report y'all got, did it get into that for property tax?
You're talking about for the?
For the county, the, the income for the property taxes, is that?
I don't know.
Okay. I, I was hoping to catch him before he left, but I've heard that that number floated around a little bit, I just wasn't sure i- if that was accurate or not, or he could confirm that. Since I came to Stokes County, uh, seven years ago, I've been. Become very well aware of a popular fundraiser in Stokes County, or drawdown tickets. I know many of you have participated in some of those, maybe some of those recently. Uh, one recent drawdown fundraiser, they sold three hundred tickets for about a hundred dollars each, and the grand prize was eight thousand dollars. Well, I want to talk to you about a fundraising opportunity that's a much better payoff than that. This one roughly has twenty-five tickets in it. Um, and it's a ninety-five percent payout, but you only have to buy a ticket if you win. If somebody came to you and said, I'm only gonna give, sell you a drawdown ticket, but the only way you have to pay is if we draw your ticket. Most of us would be very interested in that. So the Needs-Based Capital Grant, which I provided you that information, I, I placed it at your table earlier today, if you need a copy of that, please let me know. Is a grant that's been around for a while, um, and I, I provided a packet, it's broken into several different parts. The first part is the general statute, uh, the statutory requirements for this, and I'm not asking for anything today other than your consideration. And I'm not asking for anything today other than your consideration because the grant application is not out yet. As of two weeks ago, what I was told is it would be released on November 13th. The application requires three things. It requires a Board of Education approval and our board voted back in this past summer in July to apply for this grant. It requires county commissioner approval by a vote of the board and then it requires a 5% match. While these grants for a new elementary school has been $30 million, with this year's budget, it has increased to $40 million. And it is a 5% match, so it would require a $2 million match to get $38 million from, for the county. So the reason I brought up that we, our tax revenue is around $30 million per year, this would be a chance for 38 free million dollars for our county to, for a school. The application, as you see on that front page, lists seven different categories that would be evaluated on the grant. Counties designated as developmental tier one counties, if you're a tier one county, you move up in the ranking. If you're tier two, you slot in after those. If you're a tier three, you're after those. We are a tier two county. Counties with greater need and less ability to generate sales tax and property tax revenue, again, there, there's calculations for that from the state. Counties with a high debt to tax revenue ratio, again, that is considered in there. The extent to which a project will address critical deficiencies in adequately serving the current and future populate, student populations, that's one that we are definitely addressing in this, in this grant process. Projects with new construction or complete renovation of existing facilities. So they are looking to make major swings with schools and either build brand new facilities or completely renovate them. There are times when lesser renovations are approved and last year we got about four and a half million dollars to do a lot of roofs in Stokes County. That happened after a county was awarded a grant for a new high school and then they turned it down. And so then they redistributed that money and Stokes County schools all received about four and a half million dollars for new roofs that saved taxpayer money. Projects that will consolidate two or more schools into one facility. It's not a requirement, but again, that moves you up on the list. And then counties that have not received a grant under this article in the previous three years. And while we did receive money last year, we are eligible. Now they've changed that language to say if you've received a full grant, then you're ineligible for three years. And so ours was just a partial grant, so we are still eligible this year. I put the link to Article 38 in your packet and then I printed it for you as well so that you can see all of those things. And then I also put in there the spreadsheet of counties that lets you know if you're eligible or not and the required match. And Stokes County schools is required a 5% match. So again, a $2 million investment for a $38 million benefit and you only have to pay if you get it. So you don't have to pay $2 million in, in the hopes of getting it, but if you're awarded, there is a $2 million grant. Our Board of Education has identified King Elementary School to build a new King Elementary School on that property. The next page in your, in the packet says why King Elementary. For one, number two in that i- is to address deficiencies. From a school standpoint, there are multiple buildings at King Elementary School that require students to go from one building to another throughout the school day, to get to the cafeteria, to get to the gym, to get to these different areas. And while we have that place in a lot of our schools, that is the elementary school, King Elementary is the only elementary school that is required for multiple classes to do that throughout the day. And so that is a, a, a strong consideration. Flooding is a consideration. In the seven years and three or four months that I've been here, we had a major flood at King Elementary School, talking with Richie Roberts, our Director of Maintenance and Facilities, he has been here 18 years and there have been four major floods during his 18 years here. So this is a recurring problem and there's some photographs in your packet that's there. Consolidation has been discussed, there will be a joint meeting, as you know, with the county commissioners and the Board of Education soon to talk about that consolidation plan, which this is being discussed as part of that. The, the size of the school, another factor that's considered after those seven things, two other things were considered and one is the percent of the school population. And so King Elementary is our second largest elementary school that encompasses 16.5% of our elementary school students. So again, that half a percentage should move us up in the grant for using King versus using another smaller school. And also out of our entire ADM, it is our fifth largest building with 7.4% of our entire school population in there. And also, as you know, we did the facility study that, that y'all commissioned, that you paid for, that said that the, the building is in two phases and one of them has 10 years of usable life remaining. That is the third fastest to go out and the other part has 28 years remaining and that in some of the other buildings. So again, we believe that all of those different factors make King Elementary our most attractive to receive the grant, which would, it would give us the highest possible reason to get the grant. Again, I've included in there the portion of the facility study that, that you commissioned that has to do with King Elementary School that deals with that. It also includes photographs taken by Peterson Gordon Architects. The last section is a little bit bigger and it's bringing up some other areas. One, I mentioned this different facilities at, on King Elementary's property. There's some aerial footage that shows that there is land available to build on that property. Another one of the criteria to get this grant is to be shovel ready. The most shovel ready facilities move up to the grant. We don't have to purchase land. You can't use the grant funding to purchase land, that would also be at a county expense. We don't need land there, we already have land. That puts us more shovel ready than if we had to go look for land. Also with that, we have also got RFQs from architects to say, what can you do to build? Again, we've not selected one, we've not paid for one. Our board is looking through those applications now, those RFQs now. Again, that puts us closer than if we hadn't done that. The next page in there is a little bit more close up view that shows the multiple facilities at King Elementary School. King Elementary School also houses some of our district wide EC populations on our campus, our behavior classroom, some special needs classes. And again, that's more problematic when you're going outside of a building with students that potentially are runners. We have had students where we have caught out by Kirby Road to bring them back into our facility. That is a dangerous situation and a lot of that could be prevented if we were in one self-contained building instead of going from building to building, because whenever you go outside, there is a, a harder chance to keep kids contained. The next part in your packet is from our population study that shows where our current and future school age youth will be. And as you notice there, it does say that there is potential growth up in the Sandy Ridge area, but the area of King is the same population growth or more for current students and future students. So this will be a continuous need in our county to have a lot of students in the King area. The next page, which was page seven from our enrollment study, shows where new homes were being built and the projection for new homes to be built between 2021 and 2031, about 1,400 lots. And the greatest density area for that is again in King. And so again, this will serve our current students and serve for the future growth that would be built in King. The next page is out of 23 out of our enrollment study that shows that currently the southwest portion of our county already serves 50% of our students and projected by 2031, 2032, it would serve 53% of our students. So again, in trying to, and we will capture all this in the grad application once it's released to show that this will serve our current students and our future students. The next few pages that are in the grant are just some more pictures and bigger pictures for you to see about some facility issues that we are having there in the school. In the list of needs, bathrooms are mentioned. There are pictures that show that we are currently, they were not built for the privacy that's required in 23, 24 school years. There are shower curtains around students. They are available to be, if you open the door, you could see into it if the curtains wave, students are visible. To renovate those, they have to come up to current ADA standards and we would lose about half of our bathrooms in the school, where again, one of our largest schools, so renovating it without a full scale renovation would not be possible. You can see the wires that are hanging everywhere. Again, the school was built in a time before, all the cable wires and, and extra camera wires and all of that stuff is necessary in schools and so they are everywhere. Another thing, pictures toward the back of it, I'd like to point out are in our boiler room and you can see around the, the pipes, the cracks that are everywhere. Also in a big electrical panel that is sitting there in the floor for the school. This basement does flood in our floods, when we have floods and this floods. And the custodian talked about that it was the last time it was inches below the breakers in that water. And the reason we don't have pictures in there is we didn't hang out in there when we saw that the electrical system was underwater, because that would be an electrocution hazard and a major safety concern. The last set of pictures show from the last flood that we had there at King where we had inches of water all throughout the building. As you can see from inside the building to outside the building, people are walking around in knee deep water out in the parking lot. Where we would propose to build the new facility is back where the old King High School used to be, back up on the playground area, which is probably 10 or 15 feet above sea level, above where the current building is sitting. So those flooding issues would be taken care of. So we would eliminate the flooding situation, we would house some of our, our biggest, one of our biggest school, our second largest elementary school, our fifth largest school overall. And so that's why our Board of Education has determined that this would be a need with the current population and future shifts in population. And again, it is a $38 million payoff for the county with a $2 million investment that would only be paid if we were granted the grant. And with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Hey, Mr. Carter?
Yeah, sure. I may have additional questions after I hear something may jar my memory here. But so what you're saying is you're moving it to the higher ground portion. So while you're doing some construction, you would be able to keep the school open to while you build a new one?
Well, again, that would be with architects and all that, but yes, that is the current plan is that we could rebuild on that other location while school is still going on there.
And also, you know, one thing I want to point out that just came to me, that's why I'm, I'm just pointing this out while, before I forget it, but when I was on the Board of Education for 15 years and even when, and before Mr. Minahole Superintendent and even while he was there, we were, made a very concerted effort to get rid of all the mobile units that we could. And I know there are still some mobile units, of course, at the school. And I feel like if you build a new school, you would be able to get rid of all those mobile units.
That, that would certainly be the plan, to build a building that big enough to house what we need and for some growth.
And some of the other special classes are out in those mobile units and they're, the, the safety factor there is, is huge as well. And just the fact that we tried so hard to, to get rid of them and I would hate to see us do anything to cause us to, to go backwards in that, in those efforts and, and have to start putting mobile units other places, but I think this building would address that and, and help in that regard. You know, I, I just think that this application just shows that you've done your homework, that there is a need, that you've done everything to try to help us be able to get this grant and save the county a lot of money, a lot of taxpayer money. Because honestly, we can't afford to build, and we all know this, with our debt the way it is right now and our fund balance, we can't afford $40 million for a school. If we can get $38 million for 2 million, that's just huge, in my opinion. And to be able to save the taxpayers that amount of money, we, I think we would be foolish not to, to take advantage of that. And this, I see with the application and the things that are mentioned in here that you're targeting to try to, to get the better, I don't know what the word is, but to.
Most strategic place.
Up in the, in the, to get the money is, is, is what you're having to do and you're playing against 25 other counties or more.
It, it's roughly for 100 counties, you'll get five to seven awarded, so breaks down about 25 to one.
So, you know, I think you're putting yourself in the best odds to try to, to get that money and you've done your homework in that regard, to try to get the money, to save the county money. And it, it is a needed school. It is, it's, I mean, my kids went there, I went there, my parents went there. You know, it's just, I mean, I don't even know why it's that debatable, but that's all I've got right now.
What's the enrollment this year? I haven't heard any before.
About, for that school is 411, for the county overall, it's about 5,500. How much did it go up? Basically we're the same as we were last year, we're up a few students, but not a marketed amount, but up a couple.
That's all I got. Mr. Carter?
How do you, so with the, with those class, the, the mobile units that you have and, and I appreciate the tour from a couple of weeks ago, I mean, there's no, I mean, in, in my mind, there's, there's no debate that, you know, that school is, does not need to be a school. I mean, I, I don't know how much plainer that, that I can say that. There's some other issues we can talk about in our work session that's coming up that is, that I'm trying to separate from, but one of the questions that, that I do have is about those huts. So for the population that comes into those huts, I mean, how was that site picked? Is it because the majority of the students are in that King district or, because I think they come in from all over the county, right?
They do, they, we, we have, when, again, the, one reason our board is looking at consolidation to, to look at redis, that, that consolidation plan is because we are extremely inefficient. And when you have small schools, which we have multiple schools with less than 200 students in it, to serve needs of special populations, it's hard to justify having a teacher for three special need students. That would, that would cost the county even more because the state basically looks at funding you as if you're one building. Well, because we're divided out in 19 facilities, they don't really care. They still fund as teacher wise for the overall number. So years ago, well before I was here, the decisions were made to reroute kids from around the county to be served in one location so you were more efficient. So in elementary school, primarily you're going to go to King or Poplar Springs if you're in those special classes. Southeastern Middle School houses in the middle school area and West Stokes primarily houses them at the high school area. So that part of the time, you know, if you're in the western area where 50% of our population is, therefore 50% of our special needs would be, for elementary and high school, you're served in that local area. And southeastern, to give those other side of the county kind of a break, they go to middle school there. That's what I've been told the history is, if I've been lying to you, I apologize. That's the story I was told and those decisions were made well before I was on here.
Part of the issue has always been the space to house these, these special programs and things like that. So it was, it was based on that probably to not just where the most students were, I don't think.
I guess that, I don't, I just don't know why, anyway, I mean, I don't want to, I, I just wanted to know because I, I wouldn't have. because I, I, I wouldn't have, those, those kids would not, would not be there in those huts if, if, you know, if that was me. If I was a parent, uh, I would not, I would not accept that. But anyway, that's, that's, I'm, I'm just curious from my own personal knowledge, that's all I have.
Commissioner Mendenhall.
Well, I don't have any questions or comments.
Okay.
I know this situation, so I have no comments. I don't need any comments, but I, I, I.
Okay. I don't have any questions or comments today, other than, uh, we appreciate you providing the information to us, Brad, as always. And I will have plenty of comments on November second.
All right. And again, after the thirteenth, uh, we will have that application and we'll provide it, uh, for you because again, our, our board has already voted to move forward with the grant, so we will complete the application. And once that's completed, we will provide that to Ms. Brown for y'all, for a future agenda item, uh, hopefully for a vote of support.
Right.
One quick question.
Okay.
One quick question. Um, so what's the, the, the total time? Is it like two days that you have to?
To complete the grant?
Yeah. So it opens up or is it thirty days or sixty days?
It's supposed to close January fifth. So it will open November thirteenth and, a-again, the, the application's not out yet, but the, what's been provided by DPIs of two weeks ago was November thirteenth to January fifth. Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you, Brad. Thirteenth to January fifth. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, uh, Stokes Early College Science and Nature Trail Grant.
Good afternoon, folks. Uh, my name is Mr. Price, or Seager Price. Um, previous, uh, environmental educator for, um, awarded that for the county. Um, also, um, Teacher of the Year for the District previously. Uh, been here for sixteen years. Um, very dedicated to environmental education with our students. Um, through this grant that, uh, I was, uh, granted, um, I'd like to get a nature trail built behind our, um, facility so students will have access to the creek, um, in the hopes that we'll actually have an environmental classroom as well. Um, the plan is to have multiple opportunities for, um, citizen science and more of a human connection with the students and the community itself as well. Um, and the agenda, there are multiple items there, or a couple of items there, um, the letter of commitment and then the go-grant application itself. Um, the money has been received, it's there, it's kind of just waiting to see what you folks say, honestly.
Say that again.
The, the money is, is, is there.
Okay.
Yeah, the check's there, I just need to see what your thoughts are about that.
Okay.
I talked to, um, Mr. Easter last week about the placement of where the trail could, uh, is proposed to go. Um, and I showed him various, uh, GPS maps and he said it would possibly, he doesn't think it would interfere with any other possible future development.
You answered one of my questions already.
I'm going for it, all right.
Okay, um, you know, we'll start with Commissioner Mendenhall. Is that, you have anything else?
Uh, no, not yet, no. We'll see.
Not a lot of questions, um, to the early college many times. Know the campus layout, exactly where everything's situated. So, um, money is present.
Correct, yes.
I hired Mr. Durham as a principal, not a superintendent. And, um, I know we probably, this is in discussion today, so I doubt it'd be moved to action. But personally, uh, I'll just come out and say I'm in favor of this, I'm in favor of this.
You are in favor, you are.
I am. A, A M. I am in favor of this. And you make sure Mr. Durham heard me say "M".
Uh-uh, definitely.
No, I wouldn't want to be the one to hire him and then he come back and say, why did you say the other "A"? I am in favor of this project.
Okay, Commissioner Chandler.
Um, I think it, I, I think it looks very good. Um, I think it's, um, fits with the, with the area. And I think it's great for the, for the students to have the opportunity. Um, my only question would be, is will there be any reoccurring expenses? So like every year, is there, is there money that's going to take like to keep the, the trails, you know, clear and cut back? And all the, any of the equipment that's being provided, is there any upkeep over the years that, you know, that maybe have to be updated or, or replaced?
So the trail construction itself is highly sustainable, or sustainable, um, for, um, traffic, foot traffic for over the years. Um, it's also encouraged that you could even bring bikes, potentially equine, um, so it's built heavily. Um, the idea would be Tony McGee, if you're familiar with him, um, constructed and helped assist build more springs trails. And they've been there for a really long time and held up very, very well. Um, so the idea is to bring his talent there, um, and pair up with a couple of other trail builders, um, through Rockingham and, um, the, uh, state as well. Longevity, as far as maintenance of the trail, it should be minimal. Um, I've also have multiple Eagle, Eagle Scouts throughout every year academically that are always interested in some kind of project. So that is able to do that. Um, community-wise, um, the teachers themselves, students, families, they're also there that, to make use of the trail. And we could also do volunteer days, um, like you've seen with other trails potentially. Um, as far as equipment, the only thing that would be outstanding would possibly be if we were to go beyond this and, uh, construct maybe a platform of some sort for like an outdoor classroom or something, but that would be in the, the feature, future.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood.
How, how did you, how did the process go? I'm all for grants, so.
Oh, yeah. So, uh, I myself am an avid, uh, mountain biker and trail runner. Uh, Mr. McGee, I know him personally, um, he referenced me to, um, the lady, um, with the corporation with Rockingham. And I discovered that they've already got, I think, over a dozen trails that they've created with this grant program. Um, I said, okay, well, I'd like to bring it to Stokes. And she heavily encouraged it. I gave her the information we had. We together built the grant up, made a proposal and was successful based on that.
Well, tell all your other teachers respecting another grant from him and it'd make our job easier.
For sure, yeah. I, 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 uh, that, that is something I love you.
I think it's great what you've done and that's what we're after.
Excellent.
Good job.
Thank you.
I'm all for it. I think it's a, a, a great thing, these grants. Um, my daughter's written a couple and gotten them, um, funded. She teaches at Germantown Elementary. And, um, yeah, I think it's, it's really a good way to, to, um, take advantage of, you know, like the things that are out there that can be funded through grants is just huge. And, um, I think it'll be a very big, um, success over there at the early college. I think it's a great idea, so I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Just tell us when to bring our bikes.
I know, right? Um, the potential is this will be kind of our.
Have to buy a bike, but.
I can, I can, I work at a track store part-time, so I can help with that. But I can, uh, this is basically kind of the grassroots section of this. Ideally, um, I'll partner up with Mr. Easter and potentially look at grants to continue more trail usage on the property because there's roughly ten acres there that could be used, um, to benefit that.
I got one more question. You don't have to publicly bid this?
Not to my, well, that is up to that, that company, the, the package that we've got the grant through. So that's a great question there. Um, that is the beauty of this because I don't want that drama, honestly.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Uh, no motor vehicles on this?
Yes, sir.
Just, won't be allowed, right?
No, foot traffic and, um.
With horses maybe or not?
Um, I threw that out there as far as just saying the, uh, construction of the trail and the strength of it, but the idea is not for that, honestly.
It's ideas to walk on it.
Yes, sir.
Or run on it, okay, right. Um, well, and you addressed this already, but are we sure that this? Let me ask it a, a different way. What if we decided at some point we didn't want this to be a trail anymore? We wanted to do something else with the property? Are we locked in to, for a certain number of years or anything with this grant that would restrict us from doing that?
He may know more about the grant application, but I did check with Stuart to make sure because I knew that, you know, we possibly had plans for, um, the property back there. Maybe, I know he had mentioned at some point doing some kind of agriculture center or something of that sort. And he said that it was, it was going towards our, like, our, um, our well tank back there and that's the way the trail is, is heading. So he didn't think that we'd do anything that part of the property anyways. Now, I don't know as far as expansion, but as far as where the trail's planned, I asked Stuart, he didn't think there'd be any problem for that area. We didn't plan to do anything in that part of it.
I mean, some of these grants, like the part of grants, once you do them, you're locked in for a hundred years and you can't do anything.
Not, not to my knowledge, I can look further into that though.
It wouldn't hurt just to.
Yeah.
Let Amber know if, if you find any, any potential red flags there. And are there any increase in liability insurance or anything associated with this or liability issues, would y'all think? Or would it just be the same as what it is now?
I would think it's the same as now, but I would think it would be the same as it is now because it's already county property.
Okay.
I mean, I think the liability cause is still there whether somebody was out in the woods walking around versus a trail.
Oh, okay. Okay, good, well, I'm, I'm in favor of doing it, it sounds like a great idea. What do we need to do, move to action today or next time?
Yeah, if we can, uh, either tonight or, or next time, either one, I'd like just an official vote since it is our property. That way we have it on record that we're okay with going forward with it.
I'd like to move it to action today.
Yeah, free money list on the way.
Okay, let's move it to action today then. Thank you very much, we appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll keep going, guys, we need a break, anybody? Keep going for a while.
Get it over.
Few more, do a few more. Okay, the next item is to offer surplus tax, uh, foreclosed property. And Glenda, I think, is going to talk about this.
Make it quick, it's pretty simple. Um, we started a bid process on the piece of property on Precycline Road in September the fourteenth. And we had a few offers, um, but it finally closed on October the fifth. And the final offer was two thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, so I'm just requesting that, to the board, that we accept this offer and proceed with doing the deed work through Ty's office and getting it all taken care of to get it back on the tax records.
Okay, questions, comments, everybody good with that? Do we need to go to action next time then, or?
Next time is fine because, um, after today, if you all are good with it, I'll send you all the information to Ty's office and we can get the deed work ready and have everything ready for the next meeting is fine.
Okay, super. All right, next item on our agenda is the twenty-twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting schedule. Amber, you don't say anything about that?
Well, just attached is the commissioners' meeting and the planning schedule for, um, the year twenty-twenty-four next year. We could just go ahead and approve that. Um, I think I noted in the details that the, um, only meeting days that weren't on Monday was, uh, Tuesday, May twenty-eighth and Tuesday, November twelfth because Veterans Day and Memorial Day are on those Mondays. So it would just, per our policy, go to the next county business day, which would be that Tuesday. Um, and that's noted in the details there, but I'll make sure to remind you before those meetings next year.
Okay.
But, um, I think, I think that's it, we just followed our policy like I said, second and fourth Mondays.
Did you change the January second? When there are January second or was that, I must have looked at something else.
Whatever, it's, it's always, always the second, fourth Mondays.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Second Monday.
And I just keep with the same schedule every year because that's what our policy says, yeah.
I was looking at something else and I was like, anyway, good deal.
I think we can go ahead and move this to action today if everybody's okay with it.
I don't know. Okay, uh, next item on our agenda is PTRC Workforce Development Board Appointment. Uh, Don Colwell recently resigned PTRC Board and Cindy Tuttle has, uh, put in an application to, uh, to replace her. We need to do nominations on that, I guess, open?
Yes, I think we will.
Nominate, uh, nominate Cindy Tuttle.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to close the nominations?
Make a motion, we close nominations.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, so we've nominated Cindy, are you going to advertise for two weeks?
Yeah, and just action next time.
Action next time, okay. Okay, that takes care of our discussion agenda. Our next, uh, first item on the action agenda is a Health Department bad debt write-off request. Again, motion for approval. Make a motion to approve the Health Department bad debt write-off.
Second.
Any comments, questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Uh, the next item on our agenda, on the action agenda, is Fire Commission appointments for a fire service member. At the last meeting, uh, Brad Mitchell and Brock Wheeler were nominated to serve on the Fire Commission. Um, I think that had already been approved by Fire Commission, they just need our approval, correct? Uh, we get a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Uh, the next item is a Fire Commissioner appointment for civilian members. And at the last meeting, uh, we nominated Bert Osteen for that position.
If you could just poll the board, we didn't receive, um, any applications from the, uh, Fire Marshal's office, so.
Okay. Okay, so we'll poll for that one?
Osteen.
Osteen, Osteen?
Osteen.
Osteen.
Okay, uh, so Bert is added to the Fire Commission, Fire Commissioner, as a Fire Commissioner. Uh, the next item is, uh, poll the board on the City of King ETJ planning, uh, and adjustments appointment. And Joe Ramsey was nominated to serve as the primary on that. And, um, our chairman of the school board, Von Robertson, was, uh, nominated to be the alternate for that position. Get on.
Did he accept, I thought he withdrew.
Oh, he withdrew from the primary.
Yeah, from the primary.
He did not withdraw.
Has he agreed to do?
Yeah, specifically asked him.
I said he'd do the alternate. We need a motion, we got to poll on that too, right?
Yeah, just.
Got to poll that, right.
Yeah, just poll because we didn't receive any other applications.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. So the names are Ramsey and Robertson.
And I, I'm going to clarify the first one, anybody else can follow along with me. Uh, Ramsey as the primary and Robertson as the alternate.
Ramsey is the primary and Robertson as the alternate. Ramsey primary, uh, Robertson alternate.
Ramsey primary, Robertson alternate.
Ramsey primary, Robertson alternate.
All right, so they are appointed to those positions. The last item on our agenda is, uh, resolution authorizing expenditure of the opioid settlement funds. And we've had some discussions, so on that, so I'll open the floor for discussion before we have a vote on that. Uh, we would like to make comments.
I'll start, um, so this resolution is, is, um, so some of these positions that we're talking about are through twenty-twenty-eight? It's not just one year of funding, it's.
And that's, that's really up to the board, but after the last board meeting, you know, there were so many specifics for the resolution. We didn't, I didn't get directions, so I talked to, uh, Derek Bickers and Laura Bullens from the Substance Use Committee and tried to get, kind of get an idea of a direction of what the best kind of practice would be for those amount of years and amount of money. Um, so for the opioid, uh, facilitator or the coordinator, we did through twenty-twenty-eight, uh, which is about five years, give or take a few months, a little less than five years. Um, and the reason we did that is just because of kind of just job security and wanting to find a good applicant who would stay here for the long term.
That makes, that makes sense. I think if it was only, they thought it was only for one year, a lot of people wouldn't apply. So I don't have a problem with that. I feel like we can still change things up. Um, it sounds like there's not, like, even if we say that, we're not, and we see three years in, things, we want to shift things to a different format or a different way, we could still do that.
Yeah, um.
We just have to come back and take action.
Yeah, we have to do another resolution or amendment, which I'm still figuring out how that amendment process looks like. But I know we would have to do kind of amendment to the resolution, um.
Well, the main thing I think that Chad mentioned was the LCAS for the Health Department because like I said, we have, this resolution doesn't say where they're going to be under and we can discuss that, that later. But, um, if we want to, uh, keep that, you know, put the clinical social org, say, or clinical social worker, I'm trying to find that.
Yeah, it's the second strategy.
Second strategy.
Yeah, you have to do a bunch of strategies.
Okay. So could we, uh, Jennifer, could we add like to that? So could we, uh Jennifer, could we add like to that to LCAS, say, a licensed clinical addiction specialist or licensed clinical social worker? Because I mean, it depends on, I think, what the applicant looks like and what their qualifications are. And I think Tammy Martin's input would be really helpful in that regard as to what she thinks could get the most benefit for the county if it's somebody, you don't wanna pigeonhole it. I agree with what Chad said, you know, about it just being addiction if there can be a broader spectrum of that person can.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I took.
Can that money be spent for something with a broader?
We'd have to ask Mr. Browder. He's someone that has done a lot of research on those opioid settlement funds.
I tell you, anytime you put the word or
Yeah.
Instead of uh just that one thing, and when you put a word or in there, it spans.
I would, I would almost suggest um putting on action for the next meeting if we could because he's gonna be here in person for that meeting and I can bring that up with him ahead of time to find out whether we could do. Um you're saying whether, asking whether we could do a licensed clinical addiction specialist or social worker?
I don't see the prob, I don't think we can because the description part, I'm pretty sure is optional. I just included it for transparency purposes and that's what was on the sheet that that we approved from the last meeting. So I just put LCAS on there. Um I can change the wording because I did the wording, you know what I mean? So I can just um put the wording on there because I think that description part of the resolution's optional. What really matters is the strategy and making sure we're following the amount of money and everything like that.
We got the time. Just don't mess up it.
So he said he would bring it in, their plan in December, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we we honestly could just take it all together. I mean.
I thought that's what he said.
But that doesn't matter because what we're voting on is what this is what Dr. Nelson, that our health director and our EMS director in conjunction with bringing it to the Substance Use and Treatment Committee, this was the recommendation that came out of that that we're looking at.
I understand that. I saw him stand right up in front of us and say that he didn't realize that he he didn't know that we were gonna be putting this on action.
And he must not have watched our last meeting and then.
I called Tammy Friday, yeah, and talked to her about it.
Our health director is okay with this, what we're looking at.
You gonna change seats, right?
No, I'm good. All right, well, I'm sitting there.
But we're not, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna take action on it today, so I think there's plenty of time to uh tweak it.
Well, honestly, I mean, it's up to the board. We can honestly just take it out for now because you can do as many resolutions as you want. I mean, to add to that, that expenditure of those funds. So maybe we could do a separate resolution just for that one when we decide what we want it to be.
And I'm fine with that.
It's up, it's really up to the board. Like I said, I'm the one who put this together based off of a template that the Ostat team.
The longer we put it off, the more people that are just gonna die. So, I mean, that we might could have helped. So, I mean, I I we're not gonna hire anybody right away because our human resources department is still tweaking those job descriptions. But I don't know. I like what Amber just said, take out number two and approve the rest of it and then bring that strategy back after the Health Department decides if they want it to be a LCAS or a clinical social worker or either or.
I I agree with that.
That's fine.
So we'll just take out part two.
Because it's really, it's really up to us as far as the wording and things like that. They just really care about the strategy and reporting on the impact of it. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, the wording is is up to us as far as how, what we wanna do within the positions. We don't even, you know, have to do an LCAS. If we didn't want to, we could go a totally different direction. So I, and that's really up to us. We can do as many resolutions as as we want. We just have to get them approved every time and then send them to the state before we spend money.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're not spending any money yet, unfortunately.
Other comments or questions? What are we gonna do? Is that gonna be on action next time or?
Well, I could take out number two.
Take out, take out the changes. And then we can, we can approve the.
Are you okay with the other parts of it, number three and four? Okay, with Pierce.
Let me just ask one kind of dumb question. How does, how does this, how does this interface with what the Health Board's gonna give us in December? You know, we're gonna get something from it.
The the only thing that he mentioned that's not in line with this is whether or not that position was an LCAS or a a clinical social worker. I mean, the the and I agree with what he said and I think that's what we're all looking toward is hiring that facilitator coordinator position first. And I think he mentioned, you know, he's looking at some other ways to to maybe bring in peer support. But we've gotta talk about that um in more detail, I think. But it doesn't seem like there's much variation of what this is versus, and I I've been, well, the last Health Board meeting, I was in in Indiana. But that's the meeting that he invited the Substance Use Committee to come to that meeting and I think some of them did go. So we're trying to all stay on the same page.
Okay, that that's only a month, a little over a month away.
And I will just say for information purposes, like the reason it's so much the four hundred and seventy-two thousand for the coordinators just because that includes like possible money for like computer, desk, other supplies and stuff that they're gonna need for travel expenses and other things, training, other things too, and includes salary and fringes and benefits, all that's included.
Where are these people going?
This, the coordinator, I think they all haven't decided. Is that what you're talking about?
What's their office? Do they need office space?
Well, that's kind of, yeah. That we haven't, yeah. I think that's what.
Not at the BSS. Oh, yeah, that can't go there.
I guess it depends who it's under, yeah, and that's the discussion we can have in the future.
Okay, anything else on that then? And so you'll like bring a mod- modified version to the next meeting. Can that be on action, Jen, the next time?
She's just saying, take out strategy two and I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Without strategy.
Without strategy two and she's gonna modify that and bring that back as a resolution.
Okay, so we'll vote on it whenever, it'll be on action with the changes at the next meeting.
Would you want to vote today?
Do it today.
Today. I'm making that motion today.
I could just upload the updated version.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Um I just sent Mr. Browder an email, actually, just in case we go across paths tomorrow, just to let him know that um there was that question on strategy two as to whether it can be either or, and I did let him know whatever said about that description being optional. So it may be a really quick answer and we can just put that back on that section. I don't think that's necessary. I mean, at the next meeting, you guys can go ahead and approve. In full or in part or however you wanna do it.
My motion was to approve it, taking out strategy two.
Okay.
Um and then that way, Human Resources can really work on these job descriptions and maybe at the next meeting, we can look at approving those, getting them advertised.
Okay, second.
Under that motion.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes. Got one other item on the action agenda.
Oh, two more. The early college science and nature trail grant.
Make a motion we approve.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then the um twenty twenty four Board of Commissioners meeting schedule.
I should approve the schedules first.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Now we have a closed session. Do you wanna read the uh criteria for that, Amber?
To consider the initial employment or appointment of an individual to any office or position other than a vacancy in the Board of County Commissioners or any other public body or to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of any public officer or employee other than a member of the Board of Commissioners or of some other public body pursuant to General Statute one four three dash three one eight dot one one A six.
All right, um get a motion going to closed session.
Make a motion we honor close.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's okay. You're gonna take a five-minute break.
Okay, Zane, do we have any other further business to conduct? We're backing up in session. Do we have any further business to conduct today?
Make a motion with adjourn.
Say aye. Aye. Okay, we'll adjourn.